I'm calling the meeting to order. President Sussman will be a little late tonight. I've already told him that we don't admit any trustees or presidents who are late. So I'd like, Jerry, could you just close the door if you see him coming? All right, on that very pleasant note, don't tell him I said that. Let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started, can you just have a motion in a second to have trustee Sussman act as president of pro temp?
You're going to buy your muffins for that.
We also need a roll call.
Motion, second.
Call in favor?
I'm sorry, was it Foley and Pollak?
It's on this enthusiasm.
Trustee Hamilton.
Here.
Trustee Pollak.
Here.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Collins.
Here.
Trustee Foley.
Here.
Interim Village Manager Frances.
Here.
Village Attorney Mahers.
Here.
Also President Clerk Haley. Village Attorney Molina not with us tonight, and we're expecting them any moment, right?
Okay, residents and visitors are welcome to all meetings of the village board. Public comments are welcome on any topic at regular meetings while at special meetings, public comments must be limited to issues listed on the agenda. This is a regular meeting. Comments may be made at any time. Individuals who wish to comment must be recognized by the president and then speak at the podium, beginning by identifying themselves by name and address. Okay, great. Are there any comments now, at this point? No? Moving on to the report of the village officers. I don't have any reports right now. Ms. Frances?
I just actually wanted to recognize the farmer's market. They just wrapped up their year, and the winter's market will begin on November 5th. They had a wonderful run. I myself was an active shopper of the farmer's market, and it was very well done. So everyone that was involved, I applaud you for all your hard work.
Hey, are Ms. Docker and Mr. Plummer here? No, neither of them is here. All right, well then, in the village president's report is a motion to appoint Wendy Jeeza Doctor and Keith Plummer to the Economic Development Commission with terms to expire 2017.
Right, name call? Roll call? Yes, or all in favor?
Let's do a roll call.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Foley.
Aye.
Great, and if they're watching television, we welcome them. Then there is also a motion to appoint Elizabeth Peters. Is Liz here? Is Elizabeth here? No? To chairperson of the Economic Development Commission with a term of chairperson to expire in 2015.
Second. Roll call, please. Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Foley.
Aye.
Included in our consent agenda is the approval of the bills from October 16th, 2014. The approve... Oh, hi, we just approved you as a president or as head of the commission.
Sorry, we're late.
Kathy, would you like to swear? Does she need to be sworn?
She does not get sworn.
You don't get to be sworn in, but welcome.
Thank you.
And here comes, nobody closed the door.
I was going to say, am I still present?
We were going to close the door, but trustees will love to be late.
Thank you, sorry for being a little bit late. So we're on the consent agenda?
Correct.
Does any trustee need to have anything removed for discussion? Seeing none, I ask for a motion in a second to approve.
So.
Motion by Ms. Hamilton.
Sir.
Second by Ms. Collins. Please call the roll.
Trustee Sussman.
Aye.
Trustee Hamilton.
Aye.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Collins.
Aye.
Trustee Foley.
Aye.
Motion carries. So we've already done the motions for the...
Yes.
If I can just go back just for one minute, because I'd like to tell you why I was late In about a week, you're going to be receiving in the mail a card like this. That's an information card on the street bond referendum that is on the ballot for November 4th. And I was at the Blythe PTA discussing this with them this evening. I've been going around to all the different organizations, talking about the upcoming referendum. And I encourage you, when you get it, to please take time and give it a careful reading. It has a list of facts on the back, and the most important thing, I think, it says is your vote is your voice. So please, take time to educate yourself about the referendum, and then encourage your friends and your family, and please get out the vote on November 4th. So thank you. Next up, we have no reports of departments or commissions. Are there any trustees liaising or reports this evening? Mr. Ballerine?
Recreation, the Halloween event is scheduled for October 28th, and will begin with our children's costume parade and the traditional lighting of the water tower at 6:00 p.m. This year, we'll once again have the lighting installation donated by Aaron Moore, and the Junior Women's Charity will be donating volunteers to help run the games and activities at the event. We thank them both for their continued support of the department and our programs. Secondly, starting this Saturday and Sunday on your local channel, cable channel, we will be airing the movie Our Town on Saturday at 10:00 and at 2:00, for those insomniacs out there, and on Sunday, we'll be airing Sherlock Holmes: Dressed to Kill. We will start airing movies on Saturdays and Sundays as we move forward to go along with our Saturday morning cartoons that we air, which is very exciting. And the other thing that we've learned is, this at our last cable commission meeting, is since we have been on YouTube, we've had almost 30,000 views. That's, you know, I think that's amazing, that that many people are looking at what we're doing. And I know it's all about this board that they're all watching.
Nothing like a good comedy show.
But I think that's a great testament to the commission, and I'm real proud of what the cable commission has done. Thank you.
Anyone else have a report from their commission? Hearing none, we'll move on to ordinances and resolutions. First up this evening is a first reading of an ordinance submitting Section 414 of various sections and Title IV, which are our building regulations, Chapter 3, signs of the village code. This is a first reading, which means this is a discussion item only. No final decisions will be made this evening. So we look forward to everyone, please taking part in the conversation. But our community director, Community Development Director Ms. Zapt is going to give us a presentation to get us started. Ms. Zapt.
All righty. So you have before you proposed sign code update, most specifically related to our central business district. This comes on the heels of the CMAP plan. Oh, and everybody here. All right, this comes on the heels of the CMAP plan. One of their recommendations was for the village to look at updating its sign ordinance in order to have signs that would reflect the historic character while still balancing the needs of the individual businesses. It also made a recommendation that they should create a new set of design guidelines that will strike that balance. Their other recommendation for the village to consider was to provide additional signage for the businesses in the downtown, most specifically projecting signs that would project perpendicularly out of the building so pedestrians and cars alike would be able to see what the businesses are in the downtown, and also to allow signs on the backs of the buildings that do abut the railroad tracks. So, the Planning and Zoning Commission was tasked with trying to make these updates. So they have been working on that for the past nine months, reviewing the sign code. They surveyed the central business district to see what was out there, and had pictures of most of the existing signs that were out there, trying to see which signs were nonconforming, which signs would be made nonconforming by some changes that they were considering, also just to kind of get a visual survey of what signs do we like, which signs don't we like, which signs we think are exemplary, things like that. As part of this process, we also reached out to the chamber, and so there was chamber members that came to a couple of our meetings to provide us with some feedback on the proposed changes. So, we get into our existing code. The existing code we have now for the B2 district was created back in 2005, I believe, when the central business district was created. So in tandem with that came new sign regulations for the B2 district. Currently, you are allowed a primary sign, one primary sign. It can be either a wall sign, a window sign, an awning sign, or in some cases, a monument sign. You're also allowed a secondary sign that can either be a window or an awning sign. So this is one of the illustrations it has to help show people where they can put those types of signage. So this is what's currently in the ordinance now. Also in our code, talks about the types of signs that are allowed. It allows internally illuminated individual letters, that's these kinds of signs. It allows externally illuminated wall signs. So here you can see a couple of things that are like that. It's got the gooseneck lighting that comes over the top of the signs to illuminate them. So that's external illumination, those signs are also allowed. It allows non-illuminated wall signs. Here's some examples in town of some non-illuminated ones, although the choo-choo, I think, is actually externally illuminated. Pretend those lights aren't there for sake of example. We also allow awning signs. You can see we have a few in town. The choo-choo has an awning sign. That is actually their secondary sign. And then you have Riverside Plumbing also has an awning sign. We allow non-illuminated window signs. Here's some examples of those in town. Floor has just the vinyl lettering there on the window, same with Shamrock Garden Florist. Those are permitted signs currently. We also allow neon window signs. Don't really have a lot of those in town, but that's what a neon window sign kind of looks like. We also allow externally illuminated monument signs. Those do have further restrictions on them, in that monument signs are required to go through the site plan review process. So these are examples of monument signs. You can see they have the floodlights in front of them to help illuminate them at night, but they have no internal illumination shining out of the sign. Our existing code also prohibits certain types of signs. Internally illuminated box signs are prohibited. Here's some examples of internally illuminated box signs. It prohibits internally illuminated monument signs. Here's some examples of what those type of signs are. Prohibits backlit awnings. So that's what a backlit awning looks like, in case you were wondering. Don't have any of those in town, well, in the downtown. It also prohibits projecting signs. So that would be these kinds of signs. Come out from the building, typically more of a pedestrian scale, a lot of them are more decorative, but there's some more moderny-looking ones that are out there as well. And we prohibit pole signs currently. So you get some examples of some pole signs. So that's existing, our existing code. This is what you can have, what you can't have. Some of the major changes that were proposed or recommended to you by the Planning and Zoning Commission, this is kind of basically an exhaustive list. One of the changes is to switch sign permit review to an administrative review, changing the way we calculate sign area, allowing blade signs, which is a type of projecting sign, so going back to allowing those kinds of signs that jut out from the building perpendicularly so you can see them as you're going down the street or walking down the street. Also allowing the rear wall signs for businesses abutting the railroad. It would prohibit facelit internally illuminated channel letter signs. It would prohibit the use of exposed raceways. It would add design standards for wall signs, awning signs, blade signs, and sandwich board signs. Would also allow pylon signs, which is another type of ground sign, and also changing the hours of illumination and putting in illumination level maximums. So we'll start with sign permit review. Currently, our sign ordinance or sign code requires the Planning and Zoning Commission to review and approve all signs. So Planning and Zoning Commission meets once a month. So that means any sign permit that comes in has to wait until the next Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to go through their review process before staff can issue the permit. Staff also does a concurrent review, making sure that it meets the requirements of the zoning code, and also a building permit type review to make sure the electrical, any proposed electrical and things like that are going to meet the code. One of the CMAP recommendations was to try to speed up our processes in the village, and I know you guys did, before I got here, an extensive amount of changing how those processes work. So included in this, let's extend this to the sign permits. So Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending to turn this into an administrative review process, but it would also give the zoning administrator the discretion to take signs to the commission for input if it seems like there's something that may or may not be favorable or quite meeting the design standards that are set in there. Also, there was some consideration about the blade signs. So there was some concern that with the first few blade signs, that they would be reviewing those to make sure they're kind of meeting the design standards that they were thinking and envisioning as they were going through this process for those type of signs. So if once we kind of get the handle on it, then hopefully that would be just an administrative process so that things can go quicker and a business can get their permit for a sign, hopefully within, you know, like a week, maybe two weeks, depending on if they have all their information together. So, the next thing is sign area computation. Currently, the sign ordinance just talks about what sign area it is, and then it gives you some diagrams, figures there on how you would calculate sign area, but doesn't specifically tell you how to calculate it. So judging by what they provide you, it looks like you just take one big geometric shape, put it over the sign so it's completely contained, and that is your sign area. This can be a little bit unfair in calculating sign area. We had an instance with a sign that came through the process, and the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended that I look at updating how we calculate the sign area. So the proposal is that you would, you could do it by elements. So a sign that has perhaps an emblem, like the one on the bottom does, rather than encasing the whole thing in one larger one, you could do two, one square, one rectangle to connect, add those two areas together, and that is the area of the sign. So that empty area on top of the word sign and below it is not counted in the sign area. So this will hopefully allow the businesses to have a little bit more flexibility in how much signage they can put up on their, on their wall or in their window, on their awning, et cetera. So that's one of the proposed changes. Oops, got a little happy there. Next, we'll talk about blade signs. Blade sign is a small pedestrian-oriented sign that projects perpendicular to a structure. Planning and Zoning Commission is recommending that this would be an additional signage. So this would not replace a wall sign or replace an awning sign, this is extra signage that the businesses would get. So you can have your wall sign as your primary sign, you can have a window sign as your secondary sign, but you can also then have a blade sign. However, they did put in that this would only be permitted if your other signs that you have comply with the sign ordinance. They would be limited to six square feet in area. They would be limited to coming out a maximum of three feet from the wall of the building. You'd have to have eight-foot clearance to the bottom of them to provide for, you know, safety for the pedestrians. They're only allowed on the first floor, so they could not be, if you have a two-story building, they could not be placed above the window line of the second story. We're asking that the design standard-wise, you would have metal or wood decorative brackets would be allowed, no plastic signs would be allowed, and they would only allow external illumination of those blade signs. Here's some examples of what would be okay and what would not be okay. On the left-hand side, the first picture that you see there with the blade signs above the awning, they do have external illumination, so they have little gooseneck lamps over them, providing the illumination for those signs. You can also see the decorative brackets and see how they're mounted to the buildings. Those are blade signs that are kind of more meeting what we're required. Not okay would be internally illuminated ones, so you can see the one on the bottom and the one on the right-hand side are internally illuminated. Box signs, basically, coming out from the building. Then you have the Verizon sign, not sure if that's illuminated or not, but doesn't have the more decorative bracket type of thing, so questionable as to whether that would be an allowable sign or not. Next, we move on to rear wall signs. Again, this would be an additional signage, so this is something the business could have in addition to their wall sign they have facing the street, or their awning sign, window signs. This is additional signage. It wouldn't have the same standards as wall signs, so the same restrictions on wall signs, such as the maximum size, would apply to the rear sign as well. We would say that they could be mounted to the second-story facade, provided that's okay with the building owner as well, just so they can get better visibility from the railroad tracks. So if it is a two-story building, we're going to say it's, even though you don't, you're not a second-storing unit, you would be able to have your sign up on the second story if you want to, obviously, so long as it's okay with your landlord. And again, this would only be permitted if the other signs for the business are in conformance with the ordinance. With the sign ordinance, also if the parking lot landscaping requirements and the dumpster screen requirements are met. Next, we move on to wall signs. Wall signs are permitted types of signs. Currently, you can have a wall sign. If it's going to be illuminated, the only kind of illumination you're allowed, if it's going to be internally illuminated, the only kind of illumination you're allowed is for individual letter signs. So what they're proposing to change is that they would have to be directly mounted to the wall, that there would be external illumination, and if it's internally illuminated, it would have to be the silhouette type of illumination, which you can see on the far right-hand side there. Like I said, they want it to be directly mounted to the wall so that there would be no exposed raceways or transformers. The other type of wall sign that would be permitted would be a nameplate sign, and those would be allowed to be externally illuminated if you did want to illuminate them. You can see in the middle there, like Molly's is a nameplate type sign, has got the external illumination on it. Eponatus is an individual letter sign, directly mounted to the wall, does not have any illumination. So, wall signs. Here we have, on the left-hand side, that restoration hardware that is directly mounted to the wall, so there's no raceway there. On the right-hand side, you have an internally illuminated sign that is mounted on a raceway. You can see the little arrow pointing to it. So that would not be allowed. For an illuminated sign, on the left-hand side, you have the, and for internal illumination, I should say, that's the silhouette type of illumination. So that means that the front face of the sign is opaque, the light shines back towards the wall, and it creates that kind of halo effect around the letters. So it's illuminated from the inside, but it's shining backwards towards the wall. Your standard channel type letter is there, the Sofitel sign, that's got a transparent acrylic face, the light shines through the face of the letters. Here are some examples of a nameplate sign. Nameplate signs are supposed to be a smaller type of sign, not as big as like your channel letter sign. So, a smaller scale one on the left-hand side, acceptable. The very large one on the right side, not quite what the Planning and Zoning Commission is looking for, so that would probably exceed the size, the size restriction on nameplate signs, which is, I believe, 18 square feet is the restriction, proposed restriction for nameplate signs. For these type of signs, for the individual letter signs, the restriction is one square foot per lineal foot of frontage that you have. So if you have a 20-foot wide unit, you could have 20 square feet of signage. There is a maximum to it, though, currently, and we're keeping that in there of 25 square feet. So if you have a 30-foot wide unit, you couldn't go over 25 square feet, which is currently what the code is now, so that's not changing.
Did we not reduce the dimension of the next sign, the plate sign?
For the...
One more.
These ones?
Those signs.
Those signs. So for nameplate signs, it's limited to 18 square feet, so they'd be smaller.
And we reduced that?
Yes. Right now, they would be allowed, it's all wall signs, you get maximum 25 square feet. With the new requirements, for letter signs, you can get up to 25 square feet, but for the nameplate sign, it's 18 square feet. Sandwich board signs. We currently do allow sandwich board signs. Not a whole lot of restrictions on it. They have maximum four feet in height, and I believe it said four square feet in area currently. That's not a normal size for a sandwich board sign. So one of the proposals was to bring it up to more industry standard, which is six square feet in area. We have it put in there that you have to leave five-foot of pedestrian clearance, that matches our outdoor seating requirements. Would say that they would have to be made of wood or metal only, no changeable copy. Need to be two-sided, open at the bottom, joined at the top, so it's more your typical A-frame type sign. Here we have some examples. So on the left-hand side, you have examples of what would be okay. Right-hand sign, not okay. So those slide-in letters, where it says thrift shop, those kind of signs would not, are not what they're looking for in enhancing the streetscape there in the downtown. Same with the more simple plastic ones there with the green. And then you have the other one, sale women's clothing, as you can see, that's not an A-frame type sign, it's just kind of a single-post sign. So those are not what they are going to allow for sandwich board signs. Another type of sign, so that doesn't just have to be a monument sign, is to be allowed a pylon sign, it's a freestanding sign, other than a pole sign, permanently affixed to the ground by supports, but not having the appearance of a solid base, whereas a monument sign has that solid base. It would have to go through the same requirements as a monument sign, site plan still be required. The other restriction in there was that it's going to be permitted only if the Planning and Zoning Commission determined that a wall sign is insufficient for identification of the business from the nearest public street. Same height restrictions and area restrictions as a monument sign, five feet in height, 16 square feet in area, and then that it would be made of wood or simulated wood only, and it would be required to have landscaping around the base similarly to the monument signs. So you've got some examples there on the bottom of kind of what that would look like. The next thing they tackled was hours of illumination and illumination levels. So currently, the hours of illumination are 12:30 a.m. to, or, the restrictions on illumination are 12:30 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended that we move that start time up to 11:00 p.m., so there's no illumination, it's proposed for there to be no illumination between 11:00 p.m. and 5:00 a.m. There is a clause in the code currently, and we're keeping it in there, that if the business is open during these hours, so for like our restaurants and stuff that are open till, you know, they have their liquor licenses and are open till 12, 1, 2 o'clock in the morning, they would be allowed to keep their sign open while they're operating, and they would not be in violation of those restrictions. The other addition was to have a maximum illumination level. So they're proposing that the illumination levels shall not exceed 50-foot candles measured at a distance equal to the dimension of the sign. So if you have a nine-foot wide sign, we would measure nine feet away from the face of the sign. If you have a five-foot wide sign, we'd be measuring it five feet away from the sign. 50-foot candles is your kind of standard office lighting, to kind of get an idea of what 50-foot candles is. Little bright, on the brighter side of your kind of like standard classroom office lighting. Typical TV studio lighting is at 100-foot candles, so that's kind of what we have in here right now. So at, you know, nine feet away from a nine-foot wide sign, it couldn't be any brighter than kind of what this room is right now. Or it would have to be a little bit less than where we're at right here. So that kind of gives you an idea of what a foot candle is. Because that's not, you know, you don't, we all hear about watts and stuff and bulbs, and it's not necessarily the same thing. Now we move into nonconforming signs. So currently in the code, it says that if you have a nonconforming sign, you can't replace it, you have to bring it into conformity. So if you want to put up a new sign, you can't put up the same thing that you had before if it's nonconforming. We're firming it up a little bit to say that a face change does constitute a change in a nonconforming sign. So, a face change to a nonconforming sign will not be permitted. That would be considered a change or replacement of a nonconforming sign, and you'd not be able to do that anymore. There is currently an amortization schedule in the code. It has not been enforced. So the Planning and Zoning Commission said they want the schedule enforced. The schedule's based on the value of the sign. Currently, you can see that's on the left-hand side, is the existing schedule. Breaks it down, anything under $5,000, value of the sign has to be brought into conformity within two years, and then it starts going up by 10,000 from there. Going up to 45,000 or more, has to bring their signature. Going up to forty-five thousand or more, has to bring their sign into conformance within seven years. After some discussion, it was decided that there really were very few signs in town that were valued really over twenty-five thousand dollars, and so they said, why don't we just cut out the bottom ones and have everything come into conformance within five years? So they eliminated those last two brackets, and so now it's five thousand or less within two years, five to fifteen within three, fifteen to twenty-five within four years, and anything over twenty-five thousand dollars, brought into conformance within five years. So that was their recommendation for dealing with non-conforming signs. Trying to get an idea of the estimated value of signs, staff did reach out to a sign company to get an idea of what the average cost of different types of signs are. So this is the information that I got. Your typical box sign is about thirty-two hundred dollars. Typical internally illuminated letter sign, forty-five hundred to fifty-two hundred dollars for your standard one line of, of lettering. For the silhouette type of illumination, those type of signs are a little bit more expensive, about fifty percent more, so you're looking at sixty-seven hundred dollars or so for those type of signs. Pole signs kinda start around sixty-five hundred dollars, that gets you up to about a thirty-two square foot sign. Once you get bigger than that, start using more concrete, you've got more structural things, you have to deal with it, so it starts getting incrementally more expensive, the bigger that sign up there gets. Vinyl lettering signs, so signs like floor or shamrock they have in the window, those are only about four hundred dollars. Awning signs, you're looking at about three hundred, four hundred dollars as well. So, taking that, that's kind of how we got the idea that there's not gonna be too many signs that are gonna be over that twenty-five thousand dollar mark, 'cause typically, most of the signs are gonna be more in this five thousand to fifteen thousand dollar range for some of the bigger signs in town. So, looking at all the businesses in town, we've got approximately nineteen businesses that have or will have non-conforming signs based on this ordinance. Approximately eleven of those businesses already have non-conforming signs, so they don't meet our current ordinance. So we only have about eight additional businesses that were making non-conforming with these changes. And then, these are pictures of the signs throughout town, you've got those in your packet if we want to, we have those here for reference, so people can hear, kinda see what we're talking about, if we wanna start getting into what's non-conforming, what's allowed, what's gonna be made non-conforming. So I kinda have that for us to reference as we further our discussion. Does it feel like I kinda hit everything? Okay.
So what I, what I would suggest that we do, we have a number of interested businesses here, before we get into the details of the, kinda the nuances of the, of the ordinance, I think that we should take a look at the, at this part, the non-conforming and, and the amortization aspect, and have a discussion about whether the board wishes to follow the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission and enforce the amortization schedule going forward, or whether there is some interest in grandfathering existing businesses, and then applying the, the new ordinance to either new businesses, or if there's a change in a sign, or if there's a change in ownership of the building or the business. So I thought we would start there, and then, once we have kind of reached a consensus on that, we can back in to some of the more detail-oriented aspects of the sign.
Excellent.
Ordinance. So, would anyone like to comment on that topic? Mr. Pollak?
I understand there's some concern from businesses on this particular aspect of the Plan, Plan Commission's recommendation, and I'm wondering if we could hear from those businesses first, 'cause I'd like to know what, 'cause they did, there was no objections expressed at the Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, and so I'd kinda like to hear what the concerns are before I decide what, what we're gonna do, or what I would write in there.
I agree with that.
Would anyone like to discuss this aspect of the sign ordinance, whether we should enforce the amortization, please? If you could make your comments from the podium, so everybody at home can see and hear what you have to say.
Terry Tabor, I own Salon DMR, I'm Burlington. I just renovated my building four years ago, before yours in October, and I went through a lot of, with the Planning Commission to get my sign okayed. I don't think it's in conformance anymore, from what I see, but my picture's not up there, so I guess I'm not big enough, didn't make it. Am I there? That's not really my sign.
The other one's right there.
Oh, see, don't have my glasses on. So that's not...
Your variation was...
It would be okay?
So your sign would be...
Okay. All right. So, okay, but my whole problem with the whole, when I was renovating the building, and I'll just throw this out there, 'cause it might help some other people, is I had a pole sign, which wasn't, it was horrible, so I just took the top off and didn't know that pole signs weren't, you know, I couldn't use it, so then I had to fight to get what I had, 'cause I was out of money and couldn't really afford to do a whole new sign, which, when you're coming into Riverside to put a business together, it's expensive to renovate, do whatever you have to do, and signs can be very costly, and I get why you guys wanted to kinda go with the way Riverside is and everything, and they look nice, but you have to be realistic, like that a lot of people can't afford, small businesses can't afford to do all this stuff, and maybe give them, I mean, I don't know, like, if they come in new, but some of these businesses that are here are just barely holding on, so in my opinion, you gotta kinda take that into consideration. And I don't think there's any signs that are totally horrible up there or anything, but I mean, I think all the newly renovated businesses look pretty good, in my opinion. I don't particularly love my pole sign, but it was all I could do at the time, you know, and I still, when I'm looking at all the options, there's not a lot out there for me, because my building is set back and I don't have any wall space, so for me to do much else, I didn't have too many options. So, I guess that's really all I have to say. I guess since I'm okay, I'm not gonna make a big fuss, but I was thinking, somebody told me that my, I'm, and, you know, I just, for all the businesses, wanna say, you know, we all do the best we can to make our buildings look nice, and, you know, you know, that's really all I have to say.
Thank you, Ms. Tabor. Would anyone else like to address the board? Jerry?
Okay, I'd address from here.
Yeah, the I.D.
I'm Jerry Survak, I own Metalmites, one of the last pictures up there. My concern isn't so much the side sign, these are the same signs I've put up since eighty-six, I just keep matching them, and they gave me a permit to do so. What about the back of my building, with the signage and the murals that I had put up from the kids from the high school? Is that all have to come down? Is that considered signage?
Is that?
That's not considered signage.
What about my rear sign?
Your rear sign is considered signage.
Is it, what's the problem with it? I don't see that on the picture, I see I have two main signs is what you're looking at there.
Right, I didn't get a picture of the one in the back. Presumably, right now, not completely...
Sonia, if you could, if you could step up too, please.
Currently, we're not permitted to have a sign on the back, so technically, that's non-conforming at this point. With the new ordinance that would be permitted, my one concern would be size.
It's thirty square feet.
Okay, so yeah, that's gonna exceed the eighteen square feet for that type of signage, so...
I've got a hundred and fifty feet of building, thirteen feet high, my sign is two percent of my back wall.
Mm-hmm.
But, okay.
Your, your building is, I think, more of a unique building than some of the others, where you have individual units that they're, you know, only twenty feet, twenty-two feet wide, so, but yeah, technically, it would probably be bigger.
What about my front sign, is that incon, would that be, 'cause that's thirty square feet also?
Same thing, yeah, if they're all thirty square feet, then I, then...
And they're one-year-old.
So, so, yep.
Please, Chris.
Good evening. Cindy Spingare, Jeff's Auto and Truck Repair. We have the illuminated pole sign on Quincy, and I questioned my husband before I came here, and I said, how long has that pole been there? And he, his first answer was, I think, eighty years. When it was a gas station, we had a box around there, I used to plant flowers, then we had Christmas trees, then we tore it down, but the pole remained, and it's a lit sign. I asked him, how long has it been that you've had it? Jeff has been, his business has been in this area now for twenty-four years. He started in nineteen ninety. That sign's been there for twenty-four years. So, what I would think, or hope for, is that some signs that have serviced or had their business in this community for that length of time, would get some kind of grandfather consideration, understanding that if it was ever changed or sold, that then they would have to be in compliance. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Anyone else?
Director Vella, Riverside Garage. I, I'm not sure if I am on the hit list. But, you know, I'm kinda concerned about the whole community, you know, our business community is really hurting, you know, I, there's a lot of problems out there, and yeah, I guess I am on the hit list. My sign's only been up thirty-one years. I kinda think it fits the building. I, you know, when we made it that many years ago, I had a guy design it up that thought that that looked good, and I still do. I'm really worried about some of the other businesses, you know, Terry just did her stuff, Jerry just did new signs. I mean, we're all trying to make the businesses look as good as we can for what we can afford. I don't know where else to go with it, but, you know, we're trying to work with you guys, so please, try to work with us, too. So, just remember, bills out there are not going down, they're always going up. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Rick, I appreciate that. Anyone else?
I would concur. Do you want me to come up there, say, basically, I have to concur with everybody? You have to be grandfathered in, and all those of us have businesses.
Yeah, you can come up and... Everybody wants to see my pink sweater. I look what I keep doing.
I would agree with the other businesses in town. You know, all of us had our signs done at the time we were conforming. I had mine done back in Jan, in January of nineteen ninety-eight, it's been up a while. I followed all the rules and regulations, and I think for us now, to have to come back, because the village wants to change them, is gonna be a hardship for a lot of people. I think we should be grandfathered in, or, and I don't think the village wants to hear this, if you don't like our signs, then the village should participate in the cost of having them changed. For those of you who haven't introduced myself, I'm August Sylvester, I own Sylvester Realty, and I also am a resident of Riverside. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Anyone else?
When I went through this, I came up with twenty businesses, I came up with nineteen. But when you had the dollar amount on, on all the signs, not the years, I came up with twenty-seven signs that would fall out of code, at a cost of eighty-eight thousand dollars. That's a lot of money. I mean, that's, that's, that's quite a bit of money, and I think we have some, like Fior's sign, I think that is one of the most beautiful signs we have in town. Fior, the very first one. But I'm not gonna, to go into that, but, that's 'cause I like cupcakes, but, so I would, I would like to make a motion that we grandfather in all legal permitted signs that are currently in the village.
Well, this is, let me ask the attorney, since this is a first reading, can we entertain motions like that?
Sure, yeah, 'cause you're trying to give staff direction on how to amend the ordinance.
So is it better to actually do formal motions, or...
You can just do a, see if there's a consensus, either way, you can, you can do motions like Trustee Ballerin suggested, or you can just go up and down and see if everyone feels the same way.
So, let's just have a general discussion first about it.
Can you explain what you mean by...
Legally permitted?
Yeah.
Signs that are, are currently up, that have gotten a permit when they went up, so I would assume all of these signs either got permits or went through the process. I mean, some of them are, are probably very old.
Right. Do you have eighty-year-old records? No.
I just think we, you know...
That's my only concern, is, do we, you know, I don't know.
Could you speak up for me?
I don't know that we would know if a sign that was put up eighty years ago had a permit, I'm just concerned with that wording.
Would, would that be an issue? Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
Wanted to staff to, question for staff, the eighty-eight thousand number that Trustee Ballerin quoted, I assume it's based on numbers provided by staff at some point. Were those numbers the cost of new signs? Is that for sign replacement costs?
No, that was the val, the estimated value of that type of sign that they currently have.
And did that take into considera, kind of consideration any depreciation of those signs?
No, that's what the current value of that type of sign would be.
The current value, meaning you did take into consideration how old the sign was?
I did not take into consideration how old the sign is.
If they were to replace that sign with the exact same sign but new?
It would cost them thirty-two hundred dollars.
That was an estimation of the cost.
Or whatever, yeah, whatever number.
But it's not related in any way to what a new sign that conforms to the code would cost.
Right, no, the new sign could cost more money, or if they decided to go with a different type of signage, it could cost less money, you know, if they went with a window sign as opposed to the box sign, or an awning sign or something, that would probably be less expensive than a box.
And I don't mean to downplay the fact that this is a significant expense, I understand that, believe me. I, I, I do understand that, but I just wanted to make sure we're, we're accurate in that, what we are talking about.
I personally am in favor of what our last resident said, which was that we grandfather the current signs, and then we had talked about having a program where we could share in the cost with replacement signs, and that, you know, new businesses would be required to meet these requirements, and then maybe we could work with the current businesses if they want to change them, that we could help with the cost of the replacement, so that as we hopefully bring in new businesses, they have the new signs, things are starting to look good, that other people that are currently in business may want to change theirs, and if we could help Terry come up with something and share in that cost or whatever, to go that way, rather than make a mandate.
Ms. Pollak?
Yes, you know, I've been involved in this process as a liaison to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they, as, as Director Apt mentioned, and thank you for that report, I thought that was a very, very well put-together report, and I provided all the relevant information from the Commission's deliberations, but I, I have been, I've attended all the meetings at the Planning and Zoning Commission, they've put a lot of work into it. The intent was to implement the CMAP plan, and as we all know, that's one of our top priorities as a village right now, is to implement the CMAP plan. And what they ended up doing is making recommendations that enlarge, enhance, improve signage for the business community. There was really very little takeaway in terms of taking away signs. Now, the nameplate signs, I've mentioned that we did reduce the size of those, I'm open to discussing allowing those to be bigger if, if the board feels that way, but we, we eliminated the requirement for Plan Commission review, so it's just an administrative review. We increased the size and the number of signs each business can have, and all we're really trying to do, and it seems like the primary objection here, is how we implement this, how can we get this implemented? We, we imposed this, I mean, most of these signs became non-conforming in two thousand and five, we tried to do it by grandfathering, we tried to do it by just saying, when you come in for new signs, you have to bring it up to code, and we've not been successful. I mean, we still have probably as many non-conforming signs as we had back then, so I do think that it is reasonable for the village to work with the business community and try to come up with a... and try to come up with a program to get this code implemented. I, I feel that if we just grandfather them, and the only time they have to change them is when the business changes, we won't implement this code. We haven't in the past. We hope our businesses are there forever, in which case you would never have to bring the signs into conformity. But, so I would like to see us establish a, a drop dead date, so to speak, a, a, an end date where signs have to be brought into conformity. Right now, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended two years. If we need longer, that's fine with me. I just wanna see that we know that at some point, the quality of the signage is gonna match the investment that the village is making into its downtown, Burlington streetscape and other improvements. And so I really would like to see us establish that end date. And I'm willing, if the, if the businesses say we need three years, we need four years, you know, we could talk about that. I would also, you know, consider a sign replacement program. I was suggesting that the village participate in the cost of replacing non-conforming signs. I think that's something we could consider. Um, you know, at one point in our budget, we talked about a fifteen thousand dollar facade rehab, uh, grant program. Perhaps we reconsider that just as a sign replacement, uh, program. I think, you know, I'm open to that discussion, but, but I wanna see this, the CMAP recommendations implemented. And I feel that if we don't establish an end date for amortization, that we will not be successful in implementing the recommendations of CMAP as it relates to signs.
But since, in your, your, your statement that says that they, they, you know, the signs that went out are conforming in two thousand and five, and they just keep coming back up, whose fault is that? That's, that's our fault. We shouldn't have allowed those signs to come back.
Not entirely. Well, I agree with that.
Yeah, it is. Because when someone comes in for a permit for a sign that's not allowed, we shouldn't have given, shouldn't have given them the permit in the first place. So that sign shouldn't have been up. So the fact that these things keep coming isn't the, isn't the fault of the business owner, it's the fault of the, of, of our village.
In part, but it's also a product of the success of businesses. If they don't change business names, or they don't, if they are an ongoing business, they don't, they haven't had to change their sign in, in nine years.
There's been quite a few changes in town in nine years.
There have been some changes, and you're right. Some of those, if we'd had a, a replace, if we had required them to be replaced when the business changes, that helps, I agree. That helps if we implement that. If we do nothing but say, if a sign, you know, you can't touch a sign without bringing it into conformity, that helps. That is a big help. And that'll get us closer to our goal. Though what I'm suggesting is that it won't accomplish our goal, because there's hopefully successful businesses that never go out of business and never have to change their signs as a result. And we'll never see those signs upgraded. Uh, and, and we'll still have, excuse me for, for being harsh, but we'll still have the ugly box signs that I get complaints about constantly from residents, saying, Doug, you're on the board now, you're City Planner, when are you gonna fix those box signs? You know, they're ugly, you know? And I agree, and, and I don't mean to, you know, to, to be mean to those businesses, but they are unattractive, and I think our community would greatly benefit if we could replace those.
I don't even know if we have a...
Hold on, Doug, let's, let's revote ahead.
I think you almost had it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see your hand.
Ladies and gentlemen. Go ahead.
Oh, no, I'd rather, no.[840.12][840.12](Laughter). Um, I, I, right now, I know this is just a first reading, and, and, um, we're not voting. I think, I, I, if we need to extend the amortization, then, then I think we should. But I'm actually in favor of the amortization. I think that there's been, uh, there's a, a lot of impetus for change in the, in the town. There are some new things coming down the pike, not just because of CMAP, but because of the efforts of staff and the commissions there. We've gotten over, um, almost a million and a half dollars in grants, the, all of, and all of Burlington. Burlington's gonna look very different a year from now. Um, we got three-quarters of a million dollars to redo the train station. In part, the village went after the money for Burlington because of the conversation with, conversations with many people in this room, with the businesses, who have said, oh, my gosh, look at Burlington, look at the downtown. We want to attract more businesses. We want it to be appealing. And, and, um, and, and so I think that's the result, the streetscape that's gonna be coming, and will inconvenience people for a while, but it'll look gorgeous when we're done. So come to the open meeting, the hearing on it on November...
Twelfth.
Twelfth, there you go. Uh, but, but it is a first step toward making Burlington more appealing for current businesses and future b- businesses, and it is a reflection of the commissions and staff and the trustees listening to the businesses. And I think that, that it's important to remember that. Um, I also wanna say that, as Terry would know, if your sign doesn't meet the ordinance, then there's an appeal process, and that appeal process is not going away. That's how Ms. Tabor was able to maintain her pole sign. As, um, Sonia s- said, the process is being simplified. That's also in response to conversations with the chamber and with, with the business people in town. So I think there are some very important changes. Uh, we know that volunteers, including business volunteers, have maintaining, have been maintaining the planters on Burlington and on Quincy, and on Riverside Road and on Long Cabin. And we are actually hiring people to, w- once the streetscape is done, we're actually hiring professional landscapers to take care of that, in recognition that we want it to look beautiful, and we want it to be maintained all the time, and that it's easier to yell at professional landscapers than it is at volunteers who may not be weeding on a timely basis. Um, we replaced the sewers. The, a- as Sonia said, that eighteen of the businesses, by her calculation, are not conforming. Eleven of them were not conforming in two thousand and five. So, yeah, I think there's, there's some responsibility all around for, for not, um, and the amort- there is an amortization in the old code, as Sonia showed. So I think there is some responsibility on all our parts for, for not enforcing that. I would just like people, all of us, to, to think about the fact that our objective is the same. Our objective is to have businesses that are sustained for, that can survive in Riverside, current businesses that survive in Riverside, and to attract new businesses to survive in Riverside. And, and that word attract is part of why the code is being proposed for changes. I'm not saying this is what the code's gonna look like. It's the first hearing, and it's, uh, what the impetus was for redesigning the code in two thousand and five, and now in two thousand and fourteen. And I also agree that there should be some matching funds. There may be matching funds for changing that. And I'd actually like to turn it over to Jessica, because I know she's been doing some, or I can say, Jessica, do you want me to do this, or do you want... I, I said to Jessica, aren't there funds out there, state-level funds? Aren't there other programs?
Yes.
So, we didn't give her most no- much notice, but I know she did some work on that.
Um, and there are, for different small businesses. And part of what we were talking about initially during the budget process, as part of the facade, to incorporate also the signage, um, in a matching program, um, was also kind of rolling out different resources for our small, small business. Having basically a portal to different, um, resources through both the state, there are different small business organizations, et cetera, and different grant programs are not only offered statewide, but also at the federal level. The, the village would actually act as a conduit to assist the small businesses. So it's definitely something that's on Sonia and my radar, and it's something that we've been researching heavily, because obviously th- there is the importance of our small business community. We want the businesses to thrive, especially with all the work that we're putting in for Burlington. We, we want everything done very well. Um, and so that, that's basically, we've been going through, looking at different community block grants, seeing what's offered, because there is an economic development facet to that, that we're researching currently. So, um, I don't have information readily available as to what, what will be available to the businesses, but it's something that we're working towards, and also having something available online as a portal for our small business community.
And I just wanna say to the folks that are here, as we have this conversation, that wasn't your only chance to speak. If, if, as we're talking up here, you want to come up and, and, uh, express your views, please do so with this table.
I just, I just wanted to say that it's so important, as a small business owner, that you guys do support us. And if that means that you could help people that do have to change their signs financially, that's huge, not just for us, but for anybody that's looking to come into Riverside, because in a lot of other towns where their downtown is thriving, one of the reasons why it's thriving is because the village is helping the small businesses get started and, or to stay alive by helping them with things like signage and stuff. And I think that Joe and I had talked about it before, it's so important, you know, to support the businesses, not only by going to them, but by supporting them with helping them in any way you can to stay, you know, to look pretty and have nice signs and all of that. And when I was opening my business, it was a lot of work to redo the whole building and all that, and it was really frustrating, the signage part. That was the worst part about it, 'cause I had to go back and forth and back and forth to try to make something work. And nobody was, like, it took such a long time. So that was something that was very frustrating to me. And the other thing is, is I know there's been a lot of meetings about the signage, but when you're a small business owner like we are, it's hard for us to come to these meetings. I mean, we work lots of hours, all of us, and we're, we're busy, you know, and it's hard to go into the meetings. I usually work till eight or nine o'clock at night on a Thursday or a Tuesday, so it's hard. So that's why, you know, it took me a while to get here. And I actually thought that the reason why I was getting all the letters is 'cause I wasn't in conformity, so, you know? But I will say that I think it's a good idea if you can find a way to help people that have to change their signs and support them financially.
Thank you. Mr. Foley?
You know, the... I've, I've spent a lot of time going through this over the last few days, and I, I, I have a few problems. One, um, the CMAP that we've adopted, in it, the sign part of it is a very, 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 very small part of it. It, it, in the overall scheme of the entire CMAP thing, there's way more important issues within that document than addressing businesses' signs. That's one. Two, I think we're embarking upon a, a project that will change the look of the village. I personally think, shall we not wait till this project is completed, then look at the sign issue? When the trees are in, the flowers are in, all the bricks have been laid, and the project i- is complete, we can take a step back and look at it, and, and maybe blade signs wouldn't look good in this new environment. We don't know. We haven't created it yet. Um, that's two. Three, in the CMAP, it, it, it talks to trying to attract businesses, not inflict financial pain on a business. I don't think it's going to be easy for us to attract new businesses if we have very stringent and strict sign ordinances. I also think that a sign is a business's identity. It's who they are. It, it, it can be e- even who the owner of the business is and what their favorite color is, or what their favorite shape is. Um, I, I think of Rick and Larry's Garage, the building that was built in nineteen thirty with a sign on it that was very similar to the one that's there today, and he shared with me the other day about his plans of putting some gooseneck lighting, old-fashioned lighting on it, which I think it would look great. When I think of the businesses in Riverside, I don't think of their signs. It's probably because I lived here so long, I know where they are, and I don't have to look for them by a sign. I don't think that we have millions of people coming through town. Um, maybe Chief White soul can speak to how many accidents we've had with people, or lack of accidents we've had, because people aren't looking for our signs, aren't rubbernecking and looking behind and trying to find a business if they went past it. Um, I, I, I think that where we are as a village right now, there are a lot more important issues on hand than to talk about businesses' signs. Um, I know a lot of work was done over the last nine months by a lot of people to create this. And I don't even know if I'm in favor of grandfathering this. I'm more in favor of tabling this till our village comes together and, and, and the final, the train station's done, central business district's cleaned up, then we look at our sign ordinances. Um, to say that people haven't conformed since two thousand and five, well, there's a lot of businesses in this town that I think are hanging on by a thread. So the last thing I would ask them to do is go out and spend five thousand dollars for a sign, because I like it. And to your point, uh, Trustee Pollak, there weren't a lot of businesses at the, the public hearings and the public meetings, 'cause they were working, as Ms. Tabor said. But who are we to change the way that their business looks and, and how they do their business? I don't think that that's an area that we should be infringing upon. We're going after a look, uh, an image of a town that I don't think is finished evolving into what it can be. And, and signs, to me, are a very small part of that.
Table.
Um, I have a couple of things I wanna say before I speak to the issue of the grandfathering. Um, I disagree with Trustee Foley. I don't think signs are a small part. I spent my whole career in real estate. Signs, signs are very noticeable. We've got some ugly ones in Riverside. However, that being said, um, I agree very much with what Mr. Mr. Vella said about the fact that, I think there are some signs that are listed as non-conforming up there that I would like to have the staff take a second look at, because I think that some of the regulations that were put in place here are a little bit too one-size-fits-all. We've got several big buildings in town where the signs that were installed there are only non-conforming, because they don't fit some measurement regulation, but they're perfectly in proportion with the size of the building. I would like to have that looked at again. And I think that there are some other things that might be looked at again as well. I just think that those limits were drawn a little too finely, without regard to the actual appearance, and with more regard to, well, does it fit a pre-cut formula? Uh, that being said, as far as the grandfathering issue goes, um, I am in favor of having some type of finite limit on the, um, on the amortization of the signs. It does not have to be the limit that was set forth in this first draft. I'm, you know, perfectly happy to talk about limits that are far beyond that. I do very strongly believe, and I think I've spoken up on this before, that, um, we should establish a fund to help businesses that are non-conforming to achieve the look that we want them to achieve. Especially since, in many cases, we're the ones that made the mistake that let those signs go up in the first place. And I'm very, very disappointed to see that a sign just went up in Riverside that is non-conforming already. And that just really grinds me, you know? So, um, that's really, that's on our watch, and I think that's wrong. The other ones were on another board's watch. This is on our watch. So, that's what I have to say.
Well, so much for consensus.
(Laughter). Well, we don't have to vote tonight anyway, so.
May I ask you a question, Sam?
Of course.
I'm Steve Campbell from Fairbank Road. A couple of things first. I understand that the CMAP was how this began, but when was amending the sign on that's first articulated within the Village of Riverside's process, and by whom?
We've been talking about that since, since the prior board. I believe the prior board even was talking about revising the sign code. We've been talking, it's been in the ether for a long time. It's been talked about for a long time. It coalesced under this board with regard to the CMAP recommendations.
Okay. Um, a- as far as the sign non-conformities, all the signs that were legally permitted, where money was accepted by the Village of Riverside and permits were issued, now the village is effectively going to say, well, we were only kidding you, and now you have to take it down. I think that that sets a very dangerous legislative and government precedence in this town. Also, as far as the issue of the economic value, if I might query the village attorney on how the takings clause of taking real property without compensation, how do you feel that that would affect this issue, in addition to the cost of having to replace the sign, and any economic value in terms of the marketing that was destroyed by the forced removal of a sign that was previously permitted to be installed by the Village of Riverside?
Now, I, I think what we'll do, instead of querying the village attorney, why don't you have your comments?
Oh, I'm sorry, man. I just, I didn't feel that putting that question to any of the members of the board was fair.
No, I, I, I would, I think it'd be fine to have our village attorney later talk about the amortization schedule and, and the, and the manner in which it was drafted, but I don't wanna get into a, into a debate. want to get into a, into a debate between you and the village attorney.
It wasn't a debate with the village attorney. I was only asking how he viewed that as the village attorney under the takings clause. It wasn't that I was going to argue with him. I'm just seeking to gather information.
Okay.
Also, there are a variety of contradictory items that will create regulatory nightmares for staff in this matter, and I would suggest that the board go through, or have staff go through and review that for the specific inconsistencies where the ordinance will contradict itself and at least if you'd clarify which portion is going to be the, the one that seeks precedence.
Yes, if you have, if you have those that you can point out, we'd like to hear them.
I'll be happy to. First, the guiding principle of CMAP, which we are citing. It's on page 15 of the CMAP study that I have. And it states Riverside CBD should be a lively, active place that provides a mix of retail, restaurant services, and amenities for residents and visitors. Lively and active would seem to be the thing that we were looking for. Is that not the primary goal with the CBD, is to create a vibrant and dynamic business community that donates sales tax to the village? Okay. So, to continue, as we go over to plan recommendations, and it talks about the various businesses that are here. And it then goes on to say that most of Riverside residents are spending most of their money somewhere else. And that's because the businesses that we have don't cater just to the Village of Riverside. We keep talking about bringing in others. Well, I would ask, if you stand in Centennial Park and look east down Burlington Avenue, how many businesses could any of you or anyone in the room sight from the visibility of Would it be a lot or a very, very few, like Riverside Foods in the bank? This is an action of the signage. And if we're going to have more business, we need to attract more people to the district. And again, the plan and the code speaks to bringing people off Harlem and First Avenue. But we're building a commercial district that's pedestrian-oriented. People aren't going to read it when they drive through town in their cars. And the people that, as I mentioned last time, that are at the corner of Long Common and Burlington, as they glance east, they can't tell what we have. Then they can't stop and buy it. And since they're already at the corner, at most they're a block away from a place that could actually be very convenient with just a turn. As we go on through the CMAP, it speaks of how people feel that the downtown district looks kind of dead because there's no lighting. The people that have complained about the signs and the overly bright illumination, where were they when CMAP was going on? Who are these people that now all of a sudden have these concerns about ugly signs and interior illumination? And with blade signs, for example, where you talk about the foot candles, 50-foot candles, if it's two feet by three feet, which is the largest that the code allows, then you're going to measure the 50-foot candles at three feet from the sign. How good is that going to be 300 feet down the street? I appreciate that somebody thinks that this is going to look pretty and is appropriate, but it's going to continue to devastate the business community because you do not allow them to form any kind of an identity. And you will not bring destination shopping uses here because they won't be able to bring their individual identity with them. So it might be cute, and it might make some people happy, but it guarantees the CBD is going to continue to be an anemic, limping, on life support type of a district. And it's not fair for the small businessman who comes and invests their life. All these people that made these recommendations, how many have small businesses and brick-and-mortar buildings? And are entrepreneurs who depend on what they bring in the door for paying the mortgage and putting food on the table? It's a minority. And to say that signs that have been here that the village has taken money and given permits for are now illegal is just, it's tragic. I don't think that's what America is, but in many ways, it looks like the way that Riverside's going. I feel bad for the businessmen, and I would hope that the board tabled this sign issue until you have accomplished at least some of the important and serious things that are in the plan. And then you can come and regulate the private sector into a more restrictive environment that makes it more difficult for the entrepreneur to survive. Thank you.
For your comment?
I am hearing, I mean, besides the amortization issue, I'm hearing a lot of comments that we're reducing signage or somehow taking away signs from, from the businesses. And so I've tried to identify where we have reduced signage relative to the principal signs, and Director Abt can correct me if I missed something. But I think one area was, if it's a nameplate sign, technically we're reducing the size of that from 25 to 18. If it's a internally illuminated individual letter sign, we're saying it can only be backlit, it can't be internally illuminated like Riverside Foods, correct? And then I think the third thing was the elimination of, of that same type of sign with the Raceway. Those are eliminated as well. And I think, in terms of the principal signs, those are the only three reductions that, that are in the code. Is that correct? I'm okay, I, I think those things are negotiable. I, I, and I think that I can, the Planning and Zoning Commission would agree that those aren't the, you know, those aren't the, the make or break of, of this, this code. And if we want to say, you know, if, if, if everyone would be more comfortable with this, to say, "We'll, we'll keep the nameplate signs at their current size," maybe either allow Raceway signs and internally illuminated individual letters as by right, or make them subject to Plan Commission review because they are, they can be more, they can be uglier. Yeah, maybe we make it, I don't mind making an accommodation for those so that in the end, we're not taking anything away, provided that we get some kind of commitment from the business community to bring the signs like the box signs that the community doesn't like. I think I could speak confidently to say that the residents of this community don't like those signs, and they find them unattractive. If we can get a commitment to do that, I don't mind negotiating these other, other aspects and, and basically just doing nothing but saying we're going to enforce the existing code from here on out with the amortization, which is existing. So, you know, that's another way to look at it. And I think, I think that would be consistent with what the Planning and Zoning Commission has, has suggested. Just enforce the existing code with very little changes other than that, but with the additional opportunity to have a bigger sign, because we recalculated how we're measuring signs, with the additional benefit of having a blade sign, and with the additional benefit of having a rear wall sign. So we're, we're adding to the signage, and the only thing we're asking for is that the box signs, which we get complaints about, be removed under the existing amortization schedule.
What, let me ask you a question. Box signs. Aunt Diana's Arcade Jewelers, are those box signs?
No, no. I guess it's a box sign.
I didn't ask you.
So you could answer that.
I know yours is a box sign.
What Pre-Hop Cleaners has is a box sign.
No, but Aunt. Box signs means you have a, typically a metal cabinet that has all the wiring, et cetera, for illumination, and then a face plate where the light will shine through either the entire face, or in some cases, they put an opaque background in there and have the letters carved out. So what, but what you have is basically a changeable face. So when Arcade Jewelers leaves or Sylvester leaves, you put in a new face, but it's still that box that has the lighting inside of it that will shine.
When you and I discussed this, I asked you specifically about Arcade Jewelers and Aunt Diana's, and you told me those were box signs.
I did believe they are box signs, yes.
Okay, that, that was my question. Are those box signs?
Yes.
Okay. So those are signs.
They're different than that.
Okay. But those are, those are signs that I think are very tasteful box signs.
Yeah.
And if you, if you ask, if you ask me, residents, do they think that they, we should remove those signs? I think your answer would be no.
I, I think we can distinguish between those and the others. I think that that's possible. The Plan Commission talked about the Aunt Diana sign in particular and said they don't believe that is, they don't believe the code is intended to remove that sign, to eliminate that sign.
But that's, but that's not what they sent us. That's the problem. You know, there's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of stuff. Then, then, then the answer is that we should discuss the various different signs, send it back down to plan, table this, and let them come back with, with, with some other ideas. Because there's, there's a few things in here that I, that I, I mean, I don't understand why we, why we back off the, the hours of illumination. I mean, if, I mean, I, I, if, if a client, if someone's coming out of Choo Choo for dinner, it sure would be nice that they know that we have a cupcake factory right on the corner, you know? So I don't know why we would back off the hours, especially in such a town that's, that's so dark. I don't know why we have this, this fetish with illumination. You know, I, I, Raceways, you know, if you're, if you're gonna, ever going to be able to, to bring in larger restaurants at some site, that's what they have is Raceway. PNC has a Raceway sign. I mean, that's not a restaurant, obviously, but, you know, a, a different type of restaurant, we're gonna, you're not, you're just gonna walk away from those. We have to decide what we're trying to get here in Riverside. When I drove through Hinsdale and looked at their signs, and drove in through La Grange Park and looked at their signs, it's, they're two different signs because they're, they're, the village attracts two different types of shoppers. See, but Hinsdale, it seems like they, they're, they're day shoppers, because they had very few restaurants. And obviously, La Grange was more lit and had, you know, a lot more, a lot more noodles and company and all kinds of nice. So we, we, to, to, we needed to look at our village and, and like Trustee Foley said, see where the plan takes us and see where we want to go, and see what, what we want downtown. But I, I don't, I don't think we're anywhere near close to approving these signs, because I think, you know, like, kind of what, what Trustee Hamilton said, fewer sign, I think, is a beautiful sign. And for that thing to go up two years ago and for us to, to, to tell them now, you have two years to take it down.
Well, it didn't go up two years ago.
Or, or, I'm just saying, you have two years to take it down, went up six months ago.
In fairness, they were taught when they put it up that it may become nonconforming, so they, they did know at that time that.
But, but, but still, I still think that is one of the most beautiful signs in town. And I think we have a lot of nice signs in town, and I think we have a lot of poor signs in town. But, but I think we need to do some more thinking. The blade signs, you know, I, I know that there was a lot of discussion on the size of the blade sign, whether it's six square feet or too big. You know, I, the, the sign that says Riverside Museum, that's 33 by 26, so that's about that size. But we, we say in the ordinance that it can't protrude any farther than 36 inches. So you, the, the two examples that you put up, the Birkenstock and the.
Starbucks.
Starbucks. Neither of those signs would be able to be in our village because they, I guarantee you, they protrude farther than 36 inches, because the sign at, the sign that holds up Riverside Museum protrudes farther than 36 inches. Also, the light pole.
The Starbucks sign does not protrude farther than 36 inches.
I, I bet you'd be surprised.
I, I know personally that it doesn't. Because I know where that sign is.
What, pardon?
The Birkenstock sign is combustible, wooden, you know.
Combustible?
Yes, yeah, wood. Wood supports, which is in the code, that's one of the nonconforming.
But I think we should look at, if, if you have a three-foot sign, you have to allow, you have to allow a certain amount of room for the brackets. And there's some other things in here that I, that I wrote, and if we're going to table it, we can probably discuss this at another time, so we don't have to go through them all. But I would, I would be, I would be willing to table it and, and let, send it back down to plan for, for a little deeper look.
Well, I think if, you know, the idea is to table it, send it back for a deeper look, then, then we need to articulate what it is that you want.
Then we go through every sign. I mean, that's the only thing we can do.
Go through every sign in the ordinance or in town?
I don't see.
Oh, I think, you know, we got to go, I mean, every ordinance in, or every sign in the ordinance. And then I think we need to relate that sign to what we're looking at in town, why a particular sign, you know, why does Jerry's sign not work? Because it's 30 square, 30 square feet.
But Jerry's.
So we need to find, we need to find out why that, you know, is that a sign that we think is, is acceptable? How do we make that type of sign acceptable for that size building?
Well, that, he, that's, that, Jerry, when you were talking, I thought you had left, I'm sorry. I, my first thought was that that's a good example of why you have a variation procedure. For most sized buildings in Riverside, the ordinance, the proposed ordinance may work. You have an exceptionally large building by Riverside standards, so it probably, I can't speak for the, the Plan Commission, but that's a, that's a perfect example, Terry left already, of why there's a variation procedure as opposed to allowing everybody to have a huge sign. So that, that's one thing. I don't want people to forget that if they believe that their circumstance in some way is unique, that that, that process exists. And the other thing, can I just, Jerry, did you want to go, or can I just say one more thing? Joe, you and I have had this conversation many times. I think it's, I, I think that in Riverside, we have repeatedly said that we're not, that it's very hard, well, in, in general, I think it's very hard to say this is good or bad because I like it or because I think it's pretty. That's, that's not, that's a hard way to govern, to say my, and, and so I think there has to be some kind of consensus, there have to be some kind of rules that you can follow. I think it's very hard to, to be a legislative body or to be, to direct village staff to say, "From one of us, I think that's pretty, so we should let it exist."
See, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not governing by aesthetics.
Yeah, you are.
No, I'm not. I'm, I'm looking at an example of a sign. I'm not a, I'm not a sign expert. I'm looking at an example of a sign, and I'm saying, "That is a beautiful sign." That's my personal opinion, okay? And I would like to see that type of sign, or that type of illumination, or that, that type, I'm not sure about the design, but I'm, but I'm saying, the, of, of the sign that is illuminated, I like the fact that it's illuminated. I like the way it's done. That's, that's not saying I like it's pretty and that we should just accept all pretty signs.
Sort of, but I, to Ben's point, you have to, then you, then there should be a list of things that you'd like the Plan Commission to reconsider.
Okay. Then we can go through a list of things.
I would like the Plan Commission to reconsider individually illuminated inamounted letters.
Individually illuminated.
Inamounted letters, such as Riverside Foods.
I think those should be allowed.
That it does not need to be silhouette, that it can be.
I think those should be allowed.
Pictures for that.
I also think that for purposes of.
Like that up there. That that should be allowed.
You mean destination maturity? Well, that's.
No, I'm saying. So you want to say those.
Yes. If they're individually illuminated, yes. Riverside Foods isn't.
Well, they're both individually illuminated.
I understand. Yes, I understand, but.
I, I think, you know, as a liaison to the Planning and Zoning Commission, I'm, I'm making some notes here to, and I know they'll just get the minutes of this as well, assuming we're going to send it back to them. But I think I also heard that you wanted them to look at Raceway signs.
Right, I mean, I think.
Or, or the bakery.
I would like them to consider grandfathering Raceway signs.
Grandfathering or something.
I would not like to see new Raceway signs in town, but I'd like to see them grandfathered that consist of.
Well, they are. I would like them to, I would like them to look at the projection of blade signs from the building. And increasing it from three feet, especially since the sign's two by three feet. It's, you know, and the standard that the sign is on, removing anything, if the person wants a wood standard and a wood sign versus wrought iron, aluminum, or whatever, I, I don't have a problem with that, whatever they want to hang their sign by.
Except the code says.
Well, that's what we're, but that's what we're working on.
Non-combustible.
Non-combustible, that's.
But that's what we're working on right now.
Yeah.
Working on.
You know, if we're, if we're going to plant, right now, blade signs, I think in sections where the trees are very close to the building, wouldn't work. And if we do follow this new plan that we have for the streetscape with all the new trees and new planters that are being added, and them only being six to eight feet from the facade of these buildings, going down the street at 20, 25 miles an hour, it's very hard to see a blade sign, especially when you have trees at the same height as a blade sign. If you go through sections of Lincoln Park, Lakeview, in the city where all the shops are, it's very hard to see their signs if they're up high. I, well, they are for me, and I ride in a big high truck, so they're hard for me to see. So I mean, I, I'm just saying, that's my personal opinion. I think blade signs are hard to read. I think they're nice-looking, but I think they're hard to read when they're sticking out of the building, and especially if we're having them hung right to the facade of the building.
I think blades are meant for pedestrians personally.
Yeah.
They're meant for pedestrians, not for people riding down the street.
That's why it's not, that's one of the reasons staff recommend.
That's why it's not, that's one of the reasons staff recommended that they were an additional sign, because they're not necessarily gonna be enough for a driver to see. So you still want your wall sign, your larger sign, for the cars to be able to see, but if you're walking on the street, you're not necessarily gonna be able to see that wall sign. You're more likely to be able to see it if you are driving than you are if you're right up against the building, walking. So the blade signs were more an additional sign to help with pedestrians that are already on the street. The wall signs are more, and the awning signs are more for the vehicles on the street to be able to identify the businesses.
Is there a way to make a race, wait, raceway sign less... Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't see your hand.
Oh, my gosh. So, I don't, I'm reluctant to, like, be changing the code so that signs that we currently have meet the code. I think it's better to have the code and then deal with the signs that we currently have. So, for example, Fiori's sign is a raceway sign. I'm not sure that I want to change the code to allow that. I think that we say, in this particular case, this is a, a sign that's perfectly fine, we're going to leave it, because it doesn't detract from anything in the village and it does represent the look that we're going for. So I guess my question is, what is the process of this, of the variance? And can most of these signs that are issues be dealt with that way, rather than changing the code when we, if, if the code is such that we want it to be?
Wouldn't they just be grandfathered?
Would it be grandfathered, would it be like what Jeanne was talking about with the...
Grandfathered until they were changed.
I, I guess I'm, I would be very uncomfortable personally saying that one subset of signs can be grandfathered but another can't.
No, I'm talking about dealing with individual signs.
I would, I would prefer, I, yeah, I, I would prefer that the variation process be used, but yeah, it could be. And I agree with you. I guess that's a really, really excellent way of explaining it, rather than, than trying to say, let's craft the code for a particular sign or a particular group of signs. We should be crafting the code that we feel is the, the best for Riverside, and then if there are exceptions to that code, which we still think are beautiful for Riverside, then it's a variation procedure, or then it's something else. But a variation is an individual grandfather. For instance, Terry's, Terry received a variation for her pole sign, and even under the new ordinance, that variation will continue to exist.
It just costs more time and money.
Well, we can simply, we can still work, work on the variation. Perhaps we put in the code that if, that for an existing sign, for an existing sign, if the business owner wants a variation, then we waive the variation cost. I mean, I already suggested that we waive the cost of, if for somebody who wants to change their sign because of the new ordinance, that they not be required to pay the $75 proposed fee. I mean, there are ways around that sort of thing that we can work on, and I would agree. I don't think that if we're asking, that, that sort of thing should, I would agree that that should be waived.
Mr. Pollak?
I, I have drafted codes where we've established a, a conditional approval or, or a Plan Commission approval for non-conforming, or structures or, or signs that become non-conforming, where the, the criteria is that if they meet the intent of the code, even though they don't meet the technical requirements of the code, much like Aunt Diana's sign, that the Plan Commission has the authority to recommend, and the board has the approval of establishing a specific approval for that particular sign because it meets the intent of the code. I would rather do that than a variation, because variation is, is kind of a nasty word and, and people, you know, kind of get worried when you start granting variations, but this is a way of grandfathering it, and Attorney Mars can, can comment if he thinks this is the wrong way to go. But I guess the bigger point, though, is that I think I hear what the consensus of the board is on that particular topic, and I think there's enough there to take it back to the Planning and Zoning Commission and say, we want to accommodate these particular types of signs somehow, some way, make a recommendation to do that. And they can work with the attorney to come up with language that works, that accommodates the Fiori sign, the Riverside Food signs, et cetera, and the Aunt Diana's sign, and then come back to you with a revised recommendation. And I'd be in favor of doing that.
One other thing, Trustee Pollak, I would really like the Plan Commission to look again at signs that are on buildings that are larger than average and come up with some kind of relation of, like, percentage to, to building faceline or something like that, because it's, it's just not right to have signs that look perfectly proportioned, but somehow they're not conforming because they don't meet...
It's, yeah.
Any comments?
I just have, can you clarify something for me, Doug? Page 18. A window sign as a primary sign should only be allowed in the instances where a wall sign would negatively impact the character of the building, or there are architectural features that would negatively impact by a wall sign. So what, what that's telling me is a sign like floors would no longer be a, because that's a window sign, am I correct?
Which, which sign?
Floor.
Floor, or Shamrock? Floor?
No, they would be fine.
They're conforming.
Okay, but, but listen, listen to the wording. A window sign, that is not a window sign, though.
Window sign is a principal sign.
That is the only sign they have.
Right, they don't have. Floor, there's not really a great place on floor, I'm, I'm sorry, it's more of a blow, zoomed in picture. There's not really a great place in the Arcade Building to put a wall sign that's not going to cover an architectural feature. They went the window sign. That would be acceptable. They don't have to have a wall sign as their primary sign if it's going to obstruct an architectural feature or have a negative impact on the building. Putting a wall sign on the Arcade Building, one could argue, is gonna negatively impact the architecture of the building. So I would permit, currently under the code, that little bit is not in there. That is something that is proposed. But I would say, in this instance, that would meet the code. You could make an argument that putting a wall sign over, over those archways is gonna obstruct the beauty of the building. And so you would, then it would be okay for you to have a window sign as your, as your primary sign.
And in a space like Shamrock?
Let's move on to Shamrock. Oop, I think we went too far. Nope, there we are, okay. You know, they've got, they don't have an awning. You know, you've got the, a little bit further down, Edward Jones and the end unit there, they've got the red awnings. This one, you've got more of the archway features over there. There's not a specific place that looks like a sign band, so to speak, over that unit. I think they have a valid argument saying, there's not really a great place for me to put a wall sign. I would like to do a window sign. And that's what they have.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, but a business can have a wall sign and a window sign.
I got that part.
It's just that the wall sign, the window sign has to be smaller if they have a wall sign in addition.
But they can't have a window sign as their primary sign unless there's some sort of architectural detail that they're hiding.
Right, and, and the purpose of that was to keep open views into storefronts. It's a very important downtown urban retail planning principle, is to try to maintain sightlines in the stores.
You want to be able to see inside the stores. Makes it look more alive.
So they were trying to avoid complete, you know, blocking all the windows so you can't see inside the stores.
I, sure. Jerry, can you wait just, Jerry, Jerry, could you wait just one second? I'd like you to hear what I...
Okay.
It'll be quick, I promise. I, I, I understand.
Is it signage inside a window considered commercial amendment of the school?
All signage.
I have no idea.
All signs are...
Okay.
Implications.
So here...
They're conveying a message, so the first amendment is involved.
So here's, here's what I, here's what I suggest. There, there's absolutely, there's no rush on this. We don't have to plow through these definitions at all in one night. So, you know, we've, we've had some specific recommendations already. I think we take another cut at this at the next meeting, and I would like to try to have, we've, we've had more of a philosophical discussion tonight about the, about the intent and the, and the amortization and all that. Let's, let's try to be very specific next time about what we want the Plan Commission to look at. But I want to address this question of the grandfathering and the amortization, because it, it sounds to me like if there isn't a, an even split, it's pretty close. And there were some things said that I think that need to be, that need to be clarified. The, the reason, the reason we're doing this under the auspices of CMAP is exactly to the point of trying to create a more welcoming environment, business environment. One of the things that CMAP was very clear about, though, is that the best way to attract new businesses is to facilitate your existing businesses, to create a welcoming environment, a supportive environment that, that makes them succeed. It seems to me that in a situation where you've had for a period from at least 2005, where, where the village is either explicitly or tacitly allowed signs that are non-conforming, to then expect a business to, out of their own pocket, go back and conform that sign to the new code seems to me manifestly unfair. I, I would not, if it comes down to me, I would not support doing that, and I would suggest grandfathering the existing signs. It seems to me that if you're looking at a five-year schedule, you know, businesses, we hope businesses will be here forever. The fact is, businesses come and go. And I, it just seems to me that instead of getting into either a variation process or trying to discern the intent of a sign on a, on a cherry-picked kind of basis where we set one business against another, that is not the kind of process that I think that we need to stand for as a village board. It seems to me that we, we, we would, we would reach the same place in approximately the same amount of time if we simply said, we're starting fresh. The signs you've got, you can keep. If you come into this village and want to start a new business, this is our sign code. These are the design standards you're gonna have to meet. If you start to change your sign, you have to come into compliance, the same way we would do with building, the building code and zoning requirements. It's, when you start changing things, you have to come into compliance. But for somebody who's had a sign for 30 years or 24 years, for us now to say, because of, of this code that we haven't enforced for the last nine years, now we expect you to change it, that, that's not, that's not something that, that I could, that I could ever, you know, support. And I think that we open up a, a real Pandora's box if you start trying to do it individually. If you start trying to say, this sign, we're going to grandfather, and you would, the variation process simply would not work, because where's the undue hardship?
There's also no guarantee with variation process. I do recognize that.
I mean, most of these, you know, I mean, given the kind of definition that this board has created over the last year and a half about undue hardship, you're not gonna find undue hardship in most of those non-conforming signs. So the variation process, to me, seems it would just be an exercise in futility. And there's no continuity, and there's no uniformity in decision. So I would like us next time to, to really tackle whether or not we want to grandfather these existing businesses, yes or no. And then have specific things that we, if we wanted to go back to planning and zoning, have them look at specific recommendations if we have specific concerns, and then have them come back to us. If there's a consensus that wants to table the discussion until after the streetscape is, is completed, that's up to this board. But, but I think that we've done as much as we can in, in one night for the first bite. Does anyone have anything else you'd like to say?
Can I just try something? I, I just would like to ask people to think about the idea of tabling it, because I, I understand what, what, why the request is made, but I think that that would make the situation actually worse, because what we'd like to do is to be inviting to new businesses that want to come in, and to all of a sudden have at the back of our minds that, that there may be new businesses that are interested in coming in now or after the streetscape, but to say at the back of our minds, oh, well, when the streetscape is done, then we'll relook at the, at the sign ordinance, puts us in the same situation that we're in right now, if we believe because we're not giving people the rules for the future. We're saying we're gonna redo the sign code after the streetscape is done. If businesses come in then, thinking that this is gonna be great because the streetscape is here, and they look at the current rules, while we're thinking we're gonna change it in a couple of years anyway, that seems really both unfair to planning within the village as well as to the new businesses, and we'll find ourselves in the exact same situation. So if we are going to think about grandfathering versus amortization and when to put the new sign code in place, my suggestion would, that would be that we do it sooner rather than later, so that we're not misleading new businesses or ourselves about implementing, potentially new businesses, about implementing a new sign code.
I think that's right.
I agree with you.
Very, very well put.
I agree with you. So I think we should grandfather in all our signs, and let the Plan Commission take our suggestions and start crafting the new sign ordinance that we can work through, and then we will have it ready and prepared for when the streetscape gets unveiled. So I would say yes, let's grandfather. That's a great idea.
And I think that's the, Ben's suggestion, is we handle that at our next meeting.
Well, why, why wait till the next meeting?
Yeah.
If you, if there's, if there's a consensus, but I didn't hear consensus.
But, but does somebody feel like they need two weeks to think about it, or does everyone feel like they know where they stand on it?
I, I don't, I...
Mr. Pollak?
We can't vote tonight, can we?
Yeah, the, the issue is it's set up as a first reading, and regardless of whether you guys all agree, sending it back to Plan Commission is an action. So it, it's fine to get a consensus, it's fine even for the Plan Commission to start talking about it at their next meeting, but there would have to be some sort of formal, formalized action at your next meeting that sends it jurisdiction back to the Plan Commission. But I think, I think what Mr. Pollak was asking is, is there a consensus one way or the other on grandfathering or amortization?
Okay.
Is that what you were asking? And so, do you, do you have an opinion, an opinion one way or the other regarding to grandfathering? You don't at this point? You need more time to think about it?
Yep.
Okay.
I'm grandfathering.
I would grandfather.
I'm not ready to...
I'm not ready to decide either.
Okay, then we'll...
That answers that question.
That answers that question.
But I am, the reason I wanted to, to address is, I am anxious, there's a whole list of things we talked about that needs further input from the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I don't want to wait.
But Mike is saying we can't do that until the next meeting.
Yeah, we can't do that. We can't formalize it back, because that, because this is a first reading, we can't take formal action.
Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
They can't...
Great, you can, you can, you can come up with a list, and Plan Commission can talk about it, I'm just saying, we'd have to follow it up with some sort of...
Well, it has to be on the agenda, our agenda next time.
Yes.
But can we direct the Plan Commission to begin talking about it at their next meeting that happens?
Certainly.
I'd like to see one thing added to your list, and that is for signs that have historical value, what happens to them if they're non-compliant? How are they repaired, taken care of? I think a great example is your sign at Jeff's. I mean, that thing was there since I was a kid.
Long before you were a kid.
Oh, I know.
Before you even...
Not even a gleam in his daddy's eye.
You know, I, I'd like to see people that have signs like that would like to actually restore, you know, to, to what it looked like 80 years ago. I think that'd be kind of neat to, to take into consideration, too, and there's nothing in that about anything historical.
I, I would suggest that we don't piecemeal the Planning and Zoning Commission. I would say, I mean, we have, you have the starts of a list. Let's put this on our agenda for the next time, let's go through it. We've, we've got kind of the global question, let's go through it in detail, get specific things we want the Planning and Zoning Commission to look at, and then we can send it back in a formal manner and they can tackle it comfortably. So that's it for the signs, if that's what you're, you're welcome to stay for the Capitol discussion. Jerry, thanks for staying.
Thank you, on behalf of the old businesses.
Not the old people, just the...
The older businesses.
If I restore my sign back, do you need your first name called?
If I restore my sign back in here, I say quality.
I will say from '66.
Well, I mean, you know what I mean, the look of the sign. You know, like the old gas station sign.
We're not done here yet, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I would not like to see them broken.
Okay.
Director, Director Apt, I would like to, I would like to say that congratulations on the presentation. This is a very complicated area, very detailed, tedious area, and I think, I think your presentation, and I think the plan commission, you know, is doing yeoman's work. You know, we're getting there, it's just going to take a while to get it all worked out. So, thank you. So, next up is a, the continued budget discussion for the capital improvements and projects, and I believe our village manager is going to lead us through that.
Do you guys have to say about that?
We're pretty, we're pretty close, we're pretty close.
We're getting there. Um, I also just wanted to provide a recap based on, based on direction from the village board at the last.
Hold on just one second. Sure. Let's see if we can get some quiet up there.
Okay. Okay. Based on the direction of the village board at the last meeting, staff went back and looked at operating budgets, and now we've narrowed the gap between current operating revenue and operating expenses to the $20,000, um, $20,000 figure that's presented, and it shows all the respective reductions. And so, that would be the recommended operating budget as presented by staff. Probably the best reference is the, the capital expense progression sheet that shows basically the CIP plan, what the department had, had requested, what I had recommended for the budget, and finally where we're at today, which is the revised 2015 budget. And it shows for each respective fund and then different departments that fall under those funds. A couple of items that I'd like to, to point out, and Marco was, um, very good at highlighting them, were, um, for example, I'm not sure why the, the water tower, I think, was put back in here because we.
Let's just go through them.
Okay.
So, let's just go, we'll just go through department at a time. Under, uh, the community development, Burlington Streetscape obviously is in progress. So, under Public Works, now you were going to say Public Works.
Oh, Public Works, we have the, the water tower maintenance. That was an item that was budgeted under this fiscal year, but we actually have to rebid the project because we didn't get any proposals.
She told me one page in the PDM.
It's this, um, it is.
It's in that paper.
It's probably the sixth page in. There you go, right there. There's your top page. So, that is why that item is noted, um, the, the change in which from the two previous meetings in which we started to talk about capital, the zero-turn mower that was deferred until 2016, and then also we've updated the contaminated soil estimate to 430 because we, I had directed Director Bailey to get that pile surveyed so that we actually knew what the total amount of soil was on site. And so, um, 2,150 cubic feet, or cubic yards, sorry, was what was surveyed, and the approximate removal cost is $430,000.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly.
Is that cost so high because we're taking it out of there?
Yes.
Is it the transportation costs?
That's, that, that's them coming to the site and removing it.
So, what's the moving around cost?
Well, we've, we've looked at the actual site, and Director Bailey can speak more to it, but as it relates to available locations at Public Works, because of the sheer quantity, I don't know, and we would have to speak to an engineer whether or not that, that pile can be moved around because of the space that's limited at the Public Works facility. We have to be careful with the floodplain that surrounds it, and for the most part, our property is, is fenced off currently.
So, can I, is it safe to say?
Sorry, Ed.
Well, is it, well, we don't have that information. So, this is something we, we would defer to 2016. If we don't have that information, we can't make a decision.
I, I would, I would recommend, um, if, if we're looking at taking action as it relates to the garage with Parks and Recreation, staff's recommendation reviewing all the costs associated is that we rehab the existing structure and leave the soil where it's at.
That's the cost on that sheet that we have in front of us.
Well, there, there are two different items. There is, there's the cost within our packet that shows for the rehab, and that's the estimate that we received. The, the one that I put down next to each trustee's place setting was essentially the cost to demo it. So, if we were to say we're, we're demoing that, we're opening it up, and we're going to relocate Parks and Rec items over to Public Works and relocate the contaminated soil, then, then we have those total costs versus rehabbing the existing structure.
So, it's $30,000 to demo and $80,000 to rebuild?
It's $30,000 to demo, $80,000 to rebuild, but if we're going to demo and relocate, then you've got the removal costs.
And you've got what?
Then you have the removal costs for the contaminated soil.
So, that's the 430 versus the.
And where do we, where's the $80,000 price tag for the rehab coming from?
The $80,000 is actually split.
No, I understand that, but where are we getting the number?
There is an estimate in the packet from the same, um, company that Peter Schlera had received while he was with the village last year.
Were there any, were there any design considerations or was it just rebuilding it the way, exactly the same way it is?
There were certain design considerations, and Ron, if you don't mind.
It's not even a rebuilding, it's more of a.
It's a rehab.
A rehab.
And I'd like to see a line-by-line itemization of, of that project because.
It was a rehab, although the, the interior was going to be repurposed to better suit our needs, some shelving, some hooks. Right now, it's basically just a walled-off structure where we're just kind of stacking things. There would also be a gable roof put on it to eliminate any future cooling of water, which the flat roof is wider in the situation we are. So, there'd be a complete repair of the roof, and then the interior would be, interior and exterior would be rehabbed.
I have a really naive question to ask about this whole thing. Why couldn't we just build a structure, why couldn't we like flatten the hill so that the dirt stays there and the structure is built basically with the driveway going up onto a hill? Is there not room to do that there?
That Public Works made.
Yeah.
I had asked that.
I, I thought there was a statement made at the last meeting that if we, that we could somehow build, do that over there.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Without spending removals.
Right. I'm just trying to think of how can we not remove this? I agree with, with Trustee Foley that I hate to rehab a structure that is, at the end of its useful life.
Yeah.
And I would much prefer to do a pole building over in the other area, and is there any way around this half a million dollars to remove this soil?
I think, I'd like to ask Ed real quick, I, the proximity of the pile of contaminated soil and where it sits in conjunction with our fenced-in property area over there, is it, um, it would have to fall, I would imagine, a certain distance from the fence. But, you know, if, if you were to take that amount of soil, which it was, how many?
2,150 cubic yards.
Yeah.
2,150 cubic yards.
Yeah.
About $200 per cubic yard.
I, I think that, that, if we removed some of it, not all of it, a very small amount of it, and balanced that into a pad, I think that could be accomplished.
I, I think that's probably possible because one of the things, one of the reasons this is in the budget to begin with, it was at $100,000, and the thought with the former village manager was we could at least start moving some of it. Um, we didn't know the total amount at that time. But at least start creating some space that would be usable for some purpose.
So, you're, you're roughly talking about 268 truckloads of dirt. A semi-truckload of dirt is eight yards, so about 268. That, that really, in the scheme of things, sounds like a lot of soil. It really is not. A normal residential four-bedroom home excavated to a basement depth of 10 hauls out roughly about 110 yards, 110 truckloads, excuse me, of soil. So, it, it's really, it sounds like a tremendous amount of dirt, it really isn't.
I'd be interested to see if it were spread in the area that it could be spread, how much would it raise the, the level of the, of the site? I mean.
It, it probably, I would guess somewhere, if you, depending on the size of a pole barn that you wanted to put up in a pad that you would have to pour on top of that pile, you know, it, it could probably be spread out in an area of 40 by 80 feet.
Yeah.
Do we know from an EPA standpoint that spreading it out would be permissible?
You need to stay on the site.
Yeah, well, certainly that's something, no, I don't know for sure. Certainly, any, any decision like that should first be vetted by IEP or the DNR, whoever, whoever would be regulating, I think the IEP actually. But the, the property of the Public Works facility, um, is on the north end, it's just on the north side of this contaminated soil pile. There's a floodway and floodplain there, and the east and west fence lines is almost practically the boundary of that property. It's maybe five feet or so outside that fence line on both the east and west side. So, it's really a hemmed-in site. Um, there, I don't, from, from how I see things, I don't see that there's any practical space to put that soil on that site. It would have to go off, you know, off the property that the Public Works facility is on.
Did Orion do the calculation for you?
Yes.
And did you ask him about whether or not it was possible to keep it on-site and turn it into a buildable pad?
No.
I'd like to ask that question.
I would too, because I was always under the impression that as long as the soil didn't leave the, the point from where it was excavated, meaning the property it said it was all right, and it can be used for balancing purposes, meaning i.e. berms, swales, oil spots that are filled in. So, I, I'd like to hear an answer on that too.
But I'd like to ask an additional, because I, I don't, we're kind of blurring two issues maybe with, because you're talking to pole barn, right? And so, I'd ask Director Malkyody, with regard to your storage needs, would a pole barn be sufficient for the kind of storage that you need? Or do you?
I would have to see the, the dimensions and the layout, and, I mean, I'm familiar with what a basic pole barn is, but I, I'd want to see how that's kind of purposed for our usage. Obviously, the convenience factor we would lose, but really, the impetus of this project was, was budgetary with the amount of money that it would take to remove dirt. I don't know the price to move it around or if it can be moved around, but splitting the cost between our surplus and the village to, to rehab that building on an existing footprint is why this was proposed in the first place.
It's kind of crazy since the entire city front of Chicago is built on contaminated soil that we're having this discussion, but.
That explains a lot, probably.
Yeah.
Chicago.
You know.
Almost everything in Chicago is built on contaminated soil because of all the fallout from coal dust.
I, I really think that, that, you know, you probably need to tell us, at, at the end of the day, is this whole barn idea a good idea for you? The way I look at it is, we're trying to get all our vehicles into one area and all of our stuff, all our belongings in one area. Um, I don't think that this garage is great, especially because our farmer's market's taken off, and if you have to get in and out of there on a Wednesday, that could be an issue for, or Tuesday, that could be an issue for you. Um, I just think the maintenance is over there, the fuel is over there, um, and, and I think that with a little creative work, we could find an area to build an adequate facility for you. And pole barns, people think of them as cold aluminum buildings. They can be done up any way you want inside of them. Matter of fact, even additional office space can be put inside of these things. So, they're very functional buildings.
It seems to me though, realistically, I mean, this, it's, it's November almost, and in this, if, if this is something that you're really serious about considering, this leveling and pole barns and all that, I, I can't see that we're going to get the answers you need by the time you need to develop this budget in December. So, if you want to, if you.
None of this, none of this work is predicated by weather, so, I mean, don't worry about it.
No, no, I mean, in terms of the, the actual research. So, I mean, it seems to me that, you know, one question would be if, what do we do with the existing garage that's dilapidated if we defer this for a year? Because that's, I mean, that's the other way, is to, is to defer this discussion until 2016 when we can have, we can have the engineering, you know, research done.
I, I don't, the building's been falling apart for years and.
Well, I'm asking, I mean, it's your decision. I mean, what do you want to do?
But I'd rather put a placeholder in and get this, start working on this, and Ron has expressed a need for it, it's, it's an eyesore. I'd rather.
Which placeholder, the $430,000?
The $430,000. Yeah, I'd just rather put that in. No, Jessica?
You decide.
Oh, you're very, he looked aghast when I said that.
From, from, and Ron and I have had these discussions, from a practical standpoint, the hub for Parks and Rec, and, and I understand what Trustee Foley is saying, but for, for Parks and Rec, the hub is really where the equipment is currently located, or we would need something similarly located just from the simple fact of convenience for, for Parks and Rec. And that's not to say that they couldn't drive the components that it takes to go over to Public Works and back. Um, I, I just would caution that we be cognizant of the fact that, um, Public Works was not partially underwater, but they were surrounded by water during our heavy rain events, and so with regard to Parks and Rec, they wouldn't have been able to, to move equipment until all of that water had, had gone down. Um, so that could be problematic to them, so.
That's okay, because all our parks were underwater too.
This is true. But they, they keep more than just.
These farm fields and.
Right, they keep more than just what they utilize on the field housed as well.
Yeah, well, I, well, I appreciate that the vehicles would be located there, the equipment that we use for our programs and the water tower is where we would, we would lose the convenience. And as far as service of the trucks, we're closer to Riverside Garage where we do get, we get most of our service done utilizing this garage as well.
So, you never take advantage of the mechanic that we have?
Very rarely. It depends on the job and the workload, headlights, stuff like that. So, Mr. Pollock.
I, I just wanted to throw out another perspective and to see if I'm the only one who's thinking this way, uh, because it would affect my final decision on this, but, but my, my thinking on this, this issue, all these issues, all, it keeps going back to the riverfront, the CMAT plan, the riverfront, you know? We have, you know, this goal of our village to improve the riverfront, to make it usable, to make it a beautiful spot. And so, whatever money we spend on this building, whether it be to rehab it or remove it, I want to know that, that money's going toward that goal of making the riverfront beautiful. Um, you know, not just fixing up a, a storage building. Um, you know, so, I guess, you know, is that a factor that the board thinks is important here?
Yes.
I, I figured that, but I wanted to hear it because I think we need to, you know, whatever decision we make on this, we need to make it knowing that, you know, let, let's make sure we're using our money in a good way to, to achieve that goal or to work toward that goal, and not, at least not to work away from the goal.
Well, that's why I'm reluctant to put money into this building.
Yeah, me too.
Why repairing, I mean.
Instead of tearing it?
If we tear it down, what, what do we, I mean, what's, how, how beautiful is that going to be for the, for the, for the riverfront? Um, it's just a pile of, of, you know, it's just another hole. Uh, we have a lot of riverfront.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I agree with, we need to put our money smartly for, to the riverfront, but we don't need this, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't advocate spending a half a million dollars when I could spend 50.
I understand.
Right, and I agree, I agree with that.
You know, if, if the rehab makes it better, makes it look nice, and, and contributes to our broader goal of making the riverfront more beautiful, then maybe it's worth spending.
broader goal of making the riverfront more beautiful, then maybe it's worth spending the money on. But if the rehab just makes it functional, you know, we talked about the trash dumpsters before, where are we going to put those? You know, and, you know, that, planning that riverfront, that's something that has to be considered. I don't know.
That really goes to my point. I just get the, I just feel like this is half-baked still. You know, I don't, I don't know when we say rehab for eighty thousand dollars, what is it going to look like?
Right.
Yeah, I was going to say, can we get a drawing? Is that possible?
We could, I could request that from the building.
I think that would probably help a lot.
But you're talking about changing the roof structure and the pitches and so forth of the roof, and I don't know if any of you have been in that building in the last few weeks, it's in bad, bad shape. And the floor is busted up.
I'd like to see it some.
The walls are in very bad shape, the roof structure is in very bad shape. Eighty thousand, to me, would be, and not to mention the stucco, which is the exterior skin of the building, is in horrible condition, and I don't know if anyone's gone out and priced stucco work lately. It isn't, it isn't cheap. So, you know, to, to, what Mr. Pollak said, or Trustee Pollak said, what's it going to look like? I really want a more broken down, line by line, you know, what are they going to do to the foundation? How are they going to address the heating in that building? What are they going to do about plumbing? What are they going to do about the foundation and floor structure of that building? How thick of it? You're purchasing a new bus, that has to be a new floor, it should be a minimum of six inches thick. That's a big floor. Report that floor. It could be twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars to take that floor out and report.
Okay, so, is this something that you, the other trustees want? Do you want to see a more detailed picture of what, what this would look like?
I think you guys need to go inside and walk around and check it out.
And, and, but let me ask another question, even because, you know, we say, have we asked Orion? You know, when we ask Orion, we're paying Orion. So, I mean, do you want, do you want our village engineer to look at this, at this question of the four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and, and give us an idea whether something like this is feasible, giving, given the flooding concerns that Manager Francis has talked about?
I would like a professional opinion as to what, if anything, can be done with that land. It's land, it's a village asset. We should see whether or not we can reclaim it. If we can't, we can't, and it's money well spent. At least we know the answer.
So, can we get those two...
Are you talking about the land of PW?
I have to research, because we're not going to...
At Public Works?
Yeah.
I would be in agreement with that.
But that doesn't still answer Ron's concern about storing his equipment, if not the vehicles, at least his equipment. And I think we have to recognize that, in addition to wanting a beautiful riverfront and, or wanting to be able to use the land that we have, we also have an operating need of one of our directors, of one of our departments, and...
And that's why I say, I have a caution against conflating these two, these two questions. I mean, it may well be that both are necessary and feasible. So, why don't we get the information we need, and then you can make a decision.
And is Ron, or Jessica, is that the only option we have for equipment stored close to Public Works? Not necessarily vehicles, but equipment? Is there nowhere else we can look at to put that equipment?
See, and this pole barn, it's not just for Ron.
No, I understand, I'm...
I want, I want them to put the night bus trailer, or the, whatever other vehicles that are in Ed's building, that really, Ed doesn't need those vehicles in his building.
I understand that, I'm talking about Ron's need to have the equipment closer to Public Works. There's some of that that needs to be, that he believes needs to be close to Public Works, it's his department.
Mm-hmm.
So I want to make sure that, that we're not forgetting that also.
Okay, so we're going to get that information?
So that was my question about whether there was any option besides the garage, Mike, that was it, for just his needs, closer to Public, to...
Point taken.
I always thought there's a lot of space in the, underneath the old youth center. Big, big space. I haven't been down there in a long time, but it seems like there's an awful lot of space down there.
But who's willing to say they want to put money into that right now?
Well, then, there's, there probably, I mean, I don't know if any money needs to be put into it, I mean, it sits, there's a lot of space under there. I just, are we utilizing the space we have?
See, if we're utilizing our storage, the available storage, including giving, giving some thought to the idea of maybe having some of the documents stored offsite? Because that would free up a lot of space down there as well. Anything else, trustees, underneath Public Works? Going, going, going. Under police, I think there was some confusion at the last time we looked at this, with regard to the CCTV cameras and monitors. I think some of the trustees thought that we were talking about interior monitors or cameras within the police station. Those are actually the cameras that had been discussed at our ingress, egress locations. We have, we've seen an additional memorandum by Chief Witzel. Do you have any questions about that item?
I don't think I'm ready to pull the trigger on, on these cameras yet. You know, I, we discussed briefly a private-public partnership, and I, and I think Chairperson Megan had some expertise on that with the City of Chicago, and volunteered her commission to look deeper into that, and I think we should, we should take her up on that before we take this type of jump.
So defer at this point?
Yeah, I thought we were...
I thought we were taking that out.
You haven't decided, you can if you wish.
No, I thought he was redemanding, and he didn't think it was a worthwhile purchase.
It was an initiative by the board, so that's why staff has not taken it.
I would like to take it out.
Me too.
But I would like, I would still like the, I would like to take it out, I agree. But I'd still like the Safe Environment Commission to, to study this, because I think Marty has, has some great expertise and some, some wonderful ideas that, that may be able to get us to where we want to get without the costs that we have to incur here. So it's, I think it's worthwhile initiative to take a look at for that commission to do.
And I think, well, then, certainly, the chief's memo should be shared with them as well.
Sure.
We're okay with that? Anything else under police?
Can I just follow up? So is that direction from the board to put it on the SCC?
That was my direction.
I'm okay with that.
Is there a consensus that you want Safe Environment to look further into?
I guess I think it should be staff-led initiative, not a commission-led initiative. So I, I don't think it belongs, I mean, I don't, or maybe I should look to Chief Witzel, but I think this is, this is the kind of thing that I think our police department should be leading the initiative, not a commission. This is very important, and it's got lots of different ramifications, and I, and I'm not, that doesn't mean that our police force shouldn't be working with residents who come forward, but we're really talking about one resident with fabulous expertise that's different than the Safe Environment, and I don't agree that it should be put on the Safe Environment agenda. I think Marty can be a part of it, but I think that's different than putting it on the Safe Agenda, Environment Commission.
And, you know, to that point, I mean, we've kind of put them in that position before, where we're, we're asking them to do something that they really don't have the expertise.
And our form of government is...
And there's no reason that Chairman Megan can't communicate her knowledge to Chief Witzel.
Yeah, I mean, our commit, that's sort of the role, that, that's the way we're set up, staff versus commissions. I really do think that that's not appropriate.
I, the only reason I say that is because when she was here, she expressed an interest...
But that doesn't preclude her being involved.
In taking that, in taking that on in her commission, because they had some expertise on it.
Well, I don't think it's appropriate to give it to the commission. I, that doesn't mean that Marty's not an appropriate person for the chief to, to communicate with, I just don't think it's, I personally don't think it should, I don't think it's the way we're, our government in this village operates, and I don't think that it's appropriate to give it to a commission. I think the police department should lead the initiative, if we still think it's important to look at.
I just don't know where the chief takes it from here, because he's kind of already looked at it and given us his recommendations. So what, what are we asking him to do at this point?
Contact Marty, but I just don't think it belongs, I, we, this is very awkward for me. We've heard, we know, at this point, our police believe we should be taking, we've decided we want to take it off. It's not the kind of initiative we want to, to seek to, and we've consulted our police about this, and now we're saying we want to give it to a commission? That makes absolutely no sense to me. That's...
Wow.
It doesn't. I mean, if, if the chief wants, if Marty wants to talk to the chief or something, that, that's different than giving it to a commission. I don't think that when we have the expertise of staff saying, and the board actually saying it's not something we want to pursue, then we should then say, well, let's give it to a commission anyway. Just, that's, that's...
I guess I think of giving it to the commission as like kind of a fact-finding commission, for them to kind of look into it and see, okay, what are the pluses and minuses, and then talk to the chief and see whether or not he agrees with that.
Is that what he's already done?
That's what, he's given his opinion on it, yes, but if she has special expertise in it, that to have someone else talk this through, I don't see a problem with that, but I'm not going to push this one way or the other.
I support Jane on this.
Well, the reason I followed up is because I didn't want this just to die a slow agonizing death from, you know, let's either kill it, or let's do something with it.
I, it doesn't preclude the chief and Marty speaking, but I just don't think that when we've reached this kind of consensus between our chief of police and the board, then we just then turn it over to a commission. It makes...
Well, when we turn it over to commission, the police are still in charge of the issue. They're just consulting with the commission and getting advice from the commission.
It's not, okay.
Correct.
All right. It's not the commission, it's one individual.
Mr. Pollak, what do you think?
Okay, well, that's...
It's, just doesn't...
What do you think?
Just, somebody say something.
I, I agree with Jane. I mean, you're expert on 911s right there, right there.
Ms. Collins?
I'm, I'm, I'm liaising on that commission, I don't think there's anyone on my commission besides him that, or, that could speak to it. And so, so...
My point is, I think it either dies here, or goes to the commission. So if, because the chief has already given his opinion, and so it's either, it's either dead, or we send it to the commission for more fact-finding.
I don't, okay, well, since it's fifty-fifty, then let me say what I think. Because I don't think those are the only two options.
I can't hear you, but...
There, those are not the only two options. It is possible for our chief of police to speak to the chairperson of the SCC.
That's what I suggested, yeah.
I mean, we did this to the SCC with regard to the overpass, and we asked them to make, to do something that they don't have the internal expertise to do. Ms. Megan does have expertise on this matter. There's no reason she can't communicate that expertise to Chief Witzel.
That's what Jane said, that's what I said, it doesn't have to be at a commission.
I'm agreeing with you.
Oh, no.
I know you're not used to it.
No, I know.
So, that's, I mean, I think that's the way to do it, is have them talk, and after that, Chief Witzel thinks he needs to communicate more to us, then he can do so. Is that okay?
Yes, Marty's a fabulous resource, yes.
That's okay with me, as long as I know, you know, are we going to get a report back saying you've done that, and the issue's dead?
Yes, I'll, I'll, I'll set up a meeting with Marty, and if she wants me to do it at the commission level, I'll come to the commission, I'll share all the documents with her that I've shared with the board, and then get her feedback on any, any expertise she may have, and then I'll report back to the board on whether that is, is ceasable.
What I was particularly interested in was something that really, that you didn't address, thank you. And that was the public-private partnership issue, that's what Marty was talking about. So that's the, I'm not saying that I don't think that you have a...
Yeah, one reason I didn't address that is because it was actually started on Manager Scolera's management interns here, and then the management intern left suddenly. So that management intern had started to survey the village businesses, see who has outside cameras, see if they'd be willing to partner with us, and draft letters to send to them, and then that management intern left, and we didn't have one, so it kind of got pushed to the side, because that management intern did very little work. Although he had started it, he left within like a week of when he had started our project. So, that never really got off the ground. But we could certainly revisit it, and we do have a management intern, I'm not, I'm not going to assign work to the manager's intern, but if she feels that that's something they can work, she could work on, she could help.
And my goal was not to assign work to you either, because I didn't want, that's, that's why my, my thought was to send it to a commission, so that they can do this process. Because I don't think the chief of police should be running around talking to businesses either. So that was my thought process, it was something different than what chief had actually recommended. But I will do, I will go along with anything you wish.
In that case, let's move on to projects.
I agree with you.
Thank you, Chief. Capital projects under Parks and Rec, I don't see any changes. Capital projects on vehicle replacement.
I think we've talked about these, right?
Why is this one highlighted?
It's highlighted because even if Director Bailey right now is working with the dealer and with the state bid to get a lesser-priced vehicle for R seven, however, by the time, even if it's, if the order is placed in November, we won't get it until January, so therefore it's 2015 expense. So that's why it's highlighted. So it was basically shifted from 2015, 2014 to 2015.
Okay.
And just, because my recollection was that we decided that we were going to keep R seven. My woman had that.
We're getting rid of R twenty-one.
Cut one and got rid of one.
Yeah, cut the end.
What was our, I thought we were keeping?
Mr. Bailey?
I thought we were keeping R seven, that that was the one that was in reasonably good condition.
Yeah, R seven, that's a, some kind of code assigned to a vehicle. We might, if we get a new vehicle, it still might be R seven.
Oh, so that's not a specific vehicle?
Yeah. The old R seven, I've said that, you know, I haven't made a final decision, but I'm probably more interested in keeping the old R seven than this Red Van.
Well, then, why does it say replace R seven?
It should say replace Red Van.
Or are you just saying you're going to replace one of them?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'm proposing, replace the existing R seven, which is a 2004 GMC pickup.
And then keeping it and get rid of a, get that Red Aerostar? That's the one you want to get rid of, the Red Aerostar, right?
My preference would be to get rid of that, just because the, the old R seven would be, the old pickup that's proposed for replacement seems to be more usable, more functional.
So what, so we have the document in front of us, what, what is it supposed to say? Is it supposed to say the Red Van, or is it supposed to say R seven? Which is it?
Let's, we'll, we'll just get rid of R seven. Exist, we'll, that's a 2004 pickup, we'll offer that for sale, and keep the Red Van.
So it's replacement of the Red Van?
No.
No, he said keep the Red Van.
But that's, that's, isn't that what, that's what you said? I thought you said you wanted to get rid of the Red Van.
I thought that's what it said.
We're trying to help you here.
I'd like to replace, I'd like to replace the 2004 pickup, forget, I mean, don't forget about it, but regardless of the designation of, that's how we, we assign code or whatever to these different vehicles, that, that's more of an internal thing. What I want to do is replace a 2004 GMC pickup.
Okay, let's put that in.
And keep the Red Van?
No.
That's what he said.
Whatever's simplest, I guess, is what I'm, what I favor.
Let's just say replace 2004 GMC pickups.
To replace the 2004 GMC pickup?
Right.
Okay, so that's replacing it, yeah.
I think what he's trying to say is, R seven is, he wants to, that's a pickup truck, and he wants a new pickup truck. And then when he looks at the, when he has all these trucks, this, this is the R seven. And then he has two vehicles left, which is a pickup truck, which is the old R seven, and this old Aerostar van that used to be a fire truck, or a fire thing, and then now works. So he looks at those two and says, I would rather get rid of the Red Aerostar, because it's got more miles, it's been around the block, it's ridden hard and put away wet, and in its place, throw in the pickup truck. But I think what, what, we're, that's what he's saying, but we're getting tied up in what is internal.
So you're reducing three vehicles to two? Because, because the pickup...
I'm not at all, I'm not at all proposing to increase the vehicle fleet size.
Right.
We have the same net number of vehicles, it was just a matter of which vehicles might be...
I, I think, I understand what Mr. Bailey is saying. He's repurposing the GMC, and he wants to purchase a new pickup truck for plowing purposes, and then do a trade-in of the existing Red Van, correct?
Thank you.
Okay.
That, I guess.
Okay, and that's what this is for?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it's past our bedtime.
Anything else that you see on the capital progression? Anything else? Anything else?